Please stand for the pledge. A pledge to the Constitution, to the flag of the United States of America, and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, united, with liberty and justice for all. I need a motion to accept the legislative session.
So moved.
Are there any additional changes or breaches? Paula Sager?
Hi.
Any opposed?
I abstain for not being here. As you carry.
Any extensions?
Yes.
Oh. Then we can't pass it, can we? That's not a court.
It is laws of majority here across the district. I watch person. Yes.
No, I believe we have.
I'm trying to get more than four votes. Take those minutes for another day.
I thought it was a myth. We're going to take four votes.
That's my expectation.
Of the votes. So the extensions are appropriate and you don't have to four votes.
Okay. We will visit again.
I've heard that is funny.
Okay, moving on to open forum. And this time, we would like to give district residents an opportunity to ask any questions about this agenda or about operations within the school district. Personnel matters cannot be addressed in closed session. And comments may be recorded and responded by the board of education or superintendent at a later date. And we ask that you keep your comments to find answers. So, do we have any comments?
Sure. I have a question about what you were just talking about. What if you have a meeting and then you have a turnover in the school board? Does that mean that a new school board couldn't approve minutes where it was a majority of previously serving school board members?
So in other words, if there are four new school board members, which you then not have time?
That's.
I'm not sure. It's a good question. Although the liability of having four new school board members is, I think, not really possible because the maximum openings that we have each time is only three. Most of the time, there are only two openings. And every three years, there's three openings. So a point of order I can look into. I hope it doesn't ever come to that. Okay. Any other questions or comments? Okay. Are there any agenda changes? Yes. Okay. I'll be able to hope we already have. Okay. So added correspondence and we have new business. Are there any other changes that you would like to make? Followed by no parent thought.
Just making sure. I do want to look at some new business, but that's not in the consent of so.
Okay, then we can move on to presentations. And I understand we have presentations in the shelf?
Yes.
I'm sorry, Anna, not shelf.
Hi, everyone.
Hi.
I'm here to talk about the weightlifting club that we would like to start in the high school. We'd like to make it open to all students, athletes, and or just students, if they're not athletes in the high school. We want to open up the weight room to students so that they can increase their overall fitness levels, their strength, their speed, their agility, everything, pretty much. In the past, I've been in there a lot and it's helped me a lot in my sports. I've gotten a lot stronger because of it and I think it's a really good thing that we should kind of advertise and open up to all students in the district. We're looking for the advisor of the club to be Mr. Shelly, who's also my dad.
Call it for like the great.
No, that's called transparency.
We want to make it really open to everyone, including other coaches and teachers in the district that would want to help out or volunteer to kind of oversee the weight room and/or the cardio room. I think, do you have anything else you would add?
Well, I mean, I don't know if we're going to take questions or how you want to do it.
Yeah, I'm not sure how you guys.
There could be questions.
Can I add some information?
Yeah, sure, go ahead.
I've met with Anna along with Coach Hodge, our athletic director, and we're both very supportive of the group. We've talked with Mr. Shelly about his expertise in training and fitness and weightlifting and understanding proper technique and whatnot. So I think, you know, Mr. Hodge and I are both very much in support of this and how it could really help all of our athletes as well as any student who wants to get, you know, in better health and better fitness. So we're very supportive and we think that it would be something to be great to be able to schedule time for consultations and maybe some, you know, there'd be workouts, but then there'd also be informational sessions and seminars that the group could work on developing to help people so they could build strength in specific areas if they were trained for specific sports. So it was a great conversation that we had with Anna and Mr. Hodge and I, so. And I'll just throw in a couple of other things, too. I work up at Ithaca College and professor at Ithaca College in exercise and sports sciences. I've been at it for 20 years and my background is obviously exercise science and performance psychology. And I actually was on a weightlifting team in college and then taught weightlifting classes for, I think, at least five, not six, or six and a half years in college. But one of the things that we really want to do is try to incorporate some of our graduate students, strength and conditioning specialists from Ithaca College to come in and do seminars and little workshops and many workout sessions and that kind of stuff. And really specialize it to a basketball, volleyball, baseball, or whatever it might be, sport that they want. And just more information, but then obviously setting them up on very specific programs, too. Not just say, hey, this is really good for you and turn loose, but be there for them and teach them how to lift. And I've been in and out and watching for a long time and with Anna and a few of her friends and my son Jake. And listen, there's a lot of kids that know what they're doing because they're getting coached and there's a lot of kids that don't know what they're doing. So we just want to get a more of a, a little bit more of a set schedule, but also a set programming for them so that if they're going to do it, they're going to do it right. So that's kind of where we're coming from.
Is the weight room, I mean, what's the current use or openness of it?
The only time that it's really used is by the track teams and that's.
Four or five in the afternoon. That's when they have it, like, or whatever.
So we would work with Mr. Hodge to create a schedule and create a time when they would be in there on a regular basis.
Is that pretty much year round?
Yeah. I think the idea of this would be to be year round and it would be supported. You know, I think there's quite a few coaches who would like to learn more about this and would want to support it. I know in past years, we've had coaches that came in during the summertime and had weightroom hours during the summer. But it's the kind of thing that if, once you, once you sort of build it, they will come. Creating a schedule, creating an opportunity for the kids, and then sharing the responsibility with all of our, all the folks that are related to athletics. But depending on Mr. Shelly's expertise to really teach the kids how to do what they need to do.
I have a great many questions, but I don't know if this is a farm. It's more of a, Mr. Hodge and.
Well, I think it's a good time to ask and we're not going to answer them one or another.
All right, well, the priority of the sports teams versus club, so that's kind of here. Would this be involved with the TTA because of one of the other clubs? You have to kind of work around that. How is that going to fit into this?
So this is a, it's purely a club, just like any of our extracurricular activities. We would work with Coach Hodge to set a schedule so that they're not excluding teams. The idea is to support our athletic programs, not undermine them. So we would want to build a schedule so that they, they get in there and are available when it's not necessarily being used by one of the other teams. But most of our teams practice outside of that and this would, you know, this is ideally a supplement to what they're doing in practices, so.
I think you're asking if it's a paid advisement position.
Well, it will be.
Right.
Right now, it starts out as a voluntary, it's a voluntary position. And he's volunteering to be the advisor. If the union wanted to negotiate creating a advisory for it, I think there's a process for that.
Well, this is not national item this evening, is it?
No. But it probably would be at the next week.
Or give us time, please.
What schedule do you anticipate?
I think ideally, it would be great to meet twice a week at least, even three times a week, just for an hour, an hour and a half set time. I know that would be beneficial to the students who wanted to be in the club, just so they had a consistent schedule. But again, it could just work with, along with the teams that are in season. So I think it just kind of depends kind of how many people are interested, what sports they're in, what other activities they're in, kind of working around everyone's schedule to like create the best time so that people could meet.
So this would be like a 3:30 to, I guess, in terms of if you're advising, then what does your schedule permit in terms of supervising?
Yeah. Right now, what we've been doing in the past, if we look at a typical week right now, correct me if I'm wrong here, but usually from three to four, so right when they get out of class about the time they get in there, three to four is pretty much open. And we've been, you know, trying to look to, you know, do a slot there from three to four. On Wednesdays, a track team typically does not work out in there at all. So Wednesday, we would have from three until whenever. So if we could create two or three time slots, we already have a three to four time slot multiple times a week and we have that even a longer time slot on Wednesdays. So, and my teaching schedule allows me to come in at least, at least twice, if not three times a week at that time frame. So it would be consistent to be able to do that. And the other thing is, just as we're talking about how it works in the teams, as Mr. King said, I mean, the whole goal here is to help anybody with fitness and then obviously the athletes, too. We don't want this to be a athletes do it at this time. I mean, listen, if there's some athletes that don't get their workout in at their normal time or whatever and they want to come in and that's what the club is for, is to have just an open gym time for, I mean, we don't care if they're, I think Anna sent out an email, a list of, I think we have 15 or 18 or even, I don't even know, I don't know the list, of kids who are, who are interested and wanting to be a part of this. But we, we would, I mean, if there's a baseball player, an out-of-season volleyball player and two softball players, I mean, we don't, we don't care. I mean, bring them in, the more, the better as far as we're concerned. But we just want to make sure that we're, there's someone showing them how to do it right. Because not all the, not all the teams here have a coach who's showing them how to do it right. Some are. The weight, you know, the track and field team, they're, they have great advising. They're great. But some of the other athletes don't, so. So we really want to include them, not exclude them. Other questions?
Sounds great. Thank you for volunteering your time.
Thank you.
I actually like it a lot.
Would you have additional help? How do they miss you so?
I have, this is way down the road and I'm happy to talk about this more now, but it's, I haven't even dealt with this up at Ithaca College. I would love to develop an internship program at some point, a volunteer internship program with my strength and conditioning grad students to come in and actually do this for clinical hours where they would be in here all the time and we'd have sometimes one or two grad strength and conditioning students. I mean, this is what they're going to do for a career and they're, they'd be graduate students. So I could foresee down the road having some good help, not just somebody coming in to fill in the spot, but really good help. And then what Mr. King said at the beginning, too, is I want, I want the other coaches to come in and see what we're doing and see that there's great programming. And I could, I envision walking in and having a file cabinet, which is already in there, but a file cabinet that they could open up and go softball, volleyball, baseball, you know, and all, and just pull out different off-season conditioning programs and in-season conditioning, preseason conditioning programs and all kinds of, you know, here's a cardio fitness program, here's a pure weightlifting program, here's a power program. And those are all things that other people can help me devise and put those things together and, and then those people could actually come and, yes, answer your question, has a long answer to your question and give us, have extra help.
It would also be nice to see students be paired with those graduate students to learn that field, to see as a potential career opportunity for them.
It would be awesome, yep. It's just, again, another one of those situations where we have amazing resources in our community.
Yes.
And we'd love to take advantage of them and this is a great way to do that, bring in some expertise. You know, a lot of other schools, I know I came from a much bigger district prior to working here and we had a strength and conditioning coach that was affiliated with the football team, but worked with all of our athletes. So again, that was in a, in a much larger district that had a different kind of resources, but we are blessed to have some right, some great expertise right here in our community that's willing to volunteer their time, so I want to take advantage of it.
Absolutely.
I guess the number one thing that comes to me is conflict of time in the road. If you assured me that you can manage that between you and Mr. Hodge, then.
Absolutely.
And if they have a conditioning program for people over 60.
Sounds good. All right. So this is something you think we'll put on the agenda for a vote.
It could be a new business approval next meeting.
Is there a reason that we need to wait?
Well, we just didn't set it in that format this time.
Is there any advantage to not waiting?
We just didn't know how many questions it would be and whether there'd be just a lot of time to answer those.
I just just wait till the next week and he gives you time to do this. I mean, I like what I hear.
You also provided a fair amount of detailed information in terms of what your process is here. So that gives us an opportunity to take a look at it. Except my only concern would be missing whoever's there was enough in the way of expertise in terms of supervisors. Because as much as we sincerely appreciate, we definitely wear you out.
I don't want to be worn out. That's why I said just strength and conditioning.
It's come a long way since we were told to just run up and down always to get conditioned. Okay. Thank you for your time.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, we move on to correspondence and I believe we have correspondence from.
Mr. From S.
From S. I'm sorry, I seem to be having problems pulling up my agenda a lot. It's a walk. This is, do we have. It's right here. My phone hasn't consistently been reset. I would. And this is a proposal to create a history weight for all of teaching excellent. All of teaching excellent. It's too cold down and I, my tongue is not working yet. Any questions or comments? I would suggest that we take this under advisement. Okay, I'm looking at the PSG Voces and I believe that they are, this is in regard to the membership on the Board of Educational Services and that the openings include Douglas and Land, who is from Truanceburg.
Hey, does that position start in July, the first of the year, or do you have to reorder something?
Well, it must be nominated by Board of Resolution by Monday, February 29th of this year.
I'm hoping it's not.
So, think of us the language. I'm trying to say again. Think of us the language. Okay. For the resolution.
Hopefully they'll.
Well, I haven't had a chance to speak to them, but I would be surprised if she didn't want to continue doing it, certainly, or the courtesy of asking her if she would like to do it, so.
I thought that's why you work things, you volunteer when you're not here?
That's right.
Not here, must be volunteer.
That's true.
Can I ask a question to you regarding the Voces report here? It says we estimate a capital project to open up the corner districts around January to March of 2017. Do they do it in the same fashion we do? Just reminder that.
Well, as I understand it, they're, they're developing a proposal.
Right.
And they'll begin to promote it and explain it this fall.
But it goes out just like, as if we were to do one, the citizenry would come out and vote on.
It depends on how they fund it, but that's, that's a common way to do it.
I would call it.
The districts are both on it.
Districts on it.
I think there's actually, there's three ways to fund it and I'm not familiar with the details of all three. One of them involves actually setting up a polling place on their campus and then the other two, I honestly don't know. They'll find through their presentation, but they, they are planning on doing that in about a year from right now.
Okay, any other questions or comments? Okay, moving on to committee reports. And first one would be from the policy committee. We're going to do this properly. The committee recommends a second reading and adoption of the board policy, student grading information system, so I need a motion.
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Okay. Any questions or comments? Did you have a chance to take a look at it for our last meeting? As we had said before, this is, we've had all of our principals came to look at this and they are comfortable with the language and it follows procedures that we're currently All the motion, all in, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extension? Okay, motion carried. Secondly, I need a motion regarding policy number 3211 for use of school facilities. So again, this is a second reading. So I need a motion?
So moved.
And a second. Any questions or comments? You've had a chance to go and take a look at it. The only difference here is that we have not yet set the actual cost of per fee use.
Like that was in July or?
Yeah, normally the board sets the fees at the reorder meeting. However, this, part of the purpose of this is to have these that create that legal separation, so. I would recommend that if the board chooses to approve it tonight, then two weeks from tonight, we will come with the fees that the board should look at and approve, or we can do them all two weeks from tonight. We are still learning what other districts do and trying to make sure that ours honestly are as low as possible.
I personally would like to hold the table this for two weeks, if I may, without closing discussion.
Absolutely. As you said, this is not in any way, shape, or form to generate revenue, it is simply to decrease the risk. So, and I don't think it differs markedly from the earlier policy, which is more specific and we need to apply it consistently, where in the past, it's not always been consistent.
Well, I guess part of my concern, and I'm going to be honest, I haven't read this final. I don't want to fall into the trap the last time that we had this and caused a consternation in the public. I just want to make sure that.
The one piece that was, that was added, and I placed a copy at each one of your chairs, that's highlighted on page two, is to make sure that there are groups that are, they're truly, their mission is to accomplish the district's mission and our goals. So under L, for groups that exist for the sole benefit and support of the district, including parent teacher organizations, booster clubs, which would, for example, School District Foundation and other groups as designated by the superintendent, that they would also have access to the building and then he would probably, I'm believing, so we're not charging them a fee, right? They would be, they would not have a fee for their, for meeting. So the booster club met, or the foundation meets in here, one Tuesday, a month, eight to nine, there would not be a fee for that.
PTAs.
PTAs, so. So that's, that's a change. And then the other part would be just to get really clear about the fees and just kind of work out those details.
So we can table this.
And are we at the danger of liability in the interim?
I think we're okay. We've gone a long time without this and so two more weeks. I think, I think it's, right now, it's the implementation is the important way to do it, is the important part. Policy, it's important, but then that's how we handle it.
So table the total and I was working. And since Douglas is out of town, she, didn't she send him to give a tour to the, to the TST Voces letter?
Well, that's what I already jumped into.
Yeah, this was. Okay. So, were your questions answered? Does anybody have any other comments regarding the written report? So we can move on to administrator's report. Ms. Bell?
I believe that's me. I just want to bring a correction. It looks like it says Truanceburg Central School District Investments, but I'm not talking about investments this evening.
Well, actually, in the way that we talked about last year.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm thinking of spying into the.
We kind of equate that term.
Oh.
We have funding, so.
Okay. All right. Josh, I'm going to get you to just dim those lights, thanks, just so it's a tad bit brighter. Thank you. So just to bring everyone back to where we were a couple of weeks ago, this is the working document that we created for the fiscal year 2017. And I won't start at the beginning because we did cover a lot of this information on the 7th, but it just takes us back to the purpose where we're working with the board and the leadership team and the community to define where our finances should be funded and, and most specifically in looking at the district goals. That's sort of the filter that we run everything through at budget season time. And so if we run it through the filter and it complements those board goals and district goals, then that's an item that we want to stand behind. And some of the items, some of the assumptions, we had already covered. Tomorrow is a State of the Union address and I am hopeful that by the 25th of January, I'll be able to come to you with some solid numbers. What's happening right now in the budget development process, and I shared this with the admin team today, is that I'm really looking at the big numbers that impact us as a district. So as I mentioned before, TRS, the Teachers Retirement System contribution that will be obligated to fund in 2017, the Employee Retirement System contribution that will be obligated to fund, health insurance increase, salary increases, some of those big pillar items that really drive where we're at in the budget process. Once I do get some numbers from the governor's runs, that's really where we start building it. We look at the revenue stream first and after that, then we look at which expenses we can tighten up and which expenses we really just don't have a lot of playroom in. Some of the items that we had talked about before that we feel our district should get behind and fund in the coming years, and I'll just go over these quickly, is continuation of the district security, capstone and internship, perhaps a coordinator in that role, maintaining professional development opportunities, looking at this, solving the substitute teacher shortage that we went into on a daily basis, looking at summer learning opportunities for students, continued curriculum development and expanding that beyond just the summer, which is what we currently offer our staff. And today, a new one was added to this and the idea of looking at robotics as a district sport versus an extra classroom club and what's the expense behind that. Some of the investments that we just wanted to bring your attention to that we've invested in this current fiscal that we feel are very important and some items that should likely be, continue to be funded into the future. We do have three pre-K classrooms with three teachers and five monitors. Some of the startup expenses that were put in place in 15, 16, obviously those will go down slightly in the following school years. Math support, we've added two teachers to support K-6 and 712. In the middle school, we added one FTE teacher to address the ELA and social studies and math needs. And English, in the English Language Arts, in the high school, we added a .5 teacher to address the multiple needs. In student services, we had an addition of a 1.0 FTE school counselor. In STEM, we added an additional 15,000 to start those pilot programs. In maintenance and operations, we added a full-time district cleaner. In the elementary school, due to the addition of pre-K and recognition of some of the behavioral demands that happen on a day-to-day basis, we increased the dean to full-time. We have started a program where we are incentivizing substitutes and we've increased their pay after 20 days consecutive. after 20 days, consecutive days.
Not consecutive.
No, consecutive, sorry.
You just gotta come 20 times.
There we go. And so we want to reward those substitutes that continue to substitute here at Trueman'sburg. So we've increased their daily rate when they reach that level of substituting days. We've increased the bandwidth. Because we have taken on some new teachers, we are currently funding eight mentors to support those new teachers, and we've also invested in some new maintenance equipment and invested money in our fields in terms of the field maintenance. We have funded robotics advisors and purchased an emergency generator, and we are currently upgrading our phone system. So these are some of the new expenses that have been funded for the 15, 16 school year, and likely some of these expenses that will continue to be funded into 16, 17. And like I said at the next board meeting, I hope to come to you with an anticipated revenue stream and see where that shakes out in terms of what we can fund for 2016, 17.
We should know what the rocks are sometime Wednesday, the governor's speech.
Fingers crossed. Let's hope it's okay this year. Any questions? Are we sure that he's going to re-sign?
No, no.
I'm not sure.
He said...
So...
I'll bring up politics to support me.
Any questions on everybody's report? Thought it might be a nice idea to take a look at and see where we were and show you good things we've been able to do.
Yeah. Last year, there was an increase in state aid, and so, you know, numbers came out late last fiscal in terms of budget presentation, and it was worth us waiting that out because when those numbers came in, we were able to fund many more initiatives. I'm optimistic that because we've made some difficult decisions in the prior years, and we've tightened things up, and we've been really responsible, that I feel that going into the next fiscal, we'll be in an okay position to continue to fund many of those initiatives that are important to our students and community.
And that's even with the very low, what, tax cap is probably what, same as last year?
I'm still waiting for one more number to populate the tax cap. So everything's just waiting at this point, but we do have some wins in our favor, and that is the percentage for TRS is decreasing for next fiscal, and the percentage employer contribution for ERS and TRS, both are decreasing next fiscal. So that will help us move forward without seeing a significant increase to our tax base.
But I see health insurance anticipated increase of 7%, which I see $1,100 per policy.
That is correct.
And that's pretty much what we did last year, so we're paying $2,200 additionally.
It is really, this year, as I look at all the numbers as a whole in the past, I would come out and say ERS, TRS, health insurance, and salary increases were those areas that we absolutely had to fund, and we were really at the mercy of the state to come in with a greater level of revenue to support us, and the rest of it fell to the tax base. This year, because some of those percentages have decreased, I feel that really the only thing hurting us moving forward into this next fiscal is that increase in health insurance. That's the item that will hold us and continue to hold us back in the years to come, because I do not have any indication that it will start going below 7%. I think it's only going higher each fiscal.
Okay, thank you, ma'am. Any other administrators want to add something?
I have two really easy fun shares.
Good facts back here, you can share.
This is a octopus generated on the 3D printers in our tech shop. So I'm gonna pass it around as an example of some of the kinds of cool things our kids are doing in the technology and STEM areas with the new technology that we've purchased this year. So this is created on a 3D printer.
I would like to see a 3D printer in use.
Absolutely.
Never...
Come on over. And then the one other thing that I will share, I can pass this around just as a reference point, but we got the Scholastic Art Awards were published, and we had seven students that won awards this year, including a gold key and a silver key and several honorable mentions. So you can take a look at those awards. We're on the first page, and then theirs, you can see as a reference, the other districts that participated.
And how many of us students participated?
I honestly don't know the total number of students that submitted work, but we had seven awards, seven students that have won awards, and actually more than that, so you'll see.
That sounds pretty impressive.
It's pretty awesome.
Yeah.
On that 3D presentation, could I bring the press?
Well, just, just schedule it ahead of time, tell, let Jim know you're coming.
Hey, Anna, any good news?
The boys' basketball team, I think their record is eight and four. The girls JV basketball team had a big win against Villanova Notre Dame the other day. The indoor track teams, they competed at Cornell this past Saturday. I'm not entirely sure how they did, but I'm assuming they did well, because they always usually do well. And the last thing I have is that there's a blood drive hosted by NHS on January 15th, which is this Friday, from 9:00 to 3:00, I believe.
And if you donate, you get a $5 Duncan Donuts gift card and a t-shirt.
And a t-shirt.
All donors, so swing by the school for the donation.
Um, I believe that's...
Okay. Any other questions? Okay, moving on to the second agenda. Any things we need to add? You don't really get it. Okay. Any motions?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or objections? Okay. Moving on to new business. I need a motion to accept the donation from the Trueman'sburg Rotary Club in the amount of $2,000 to use seventh grade science to purchase an octopus.
So moved.
Second.
Okay.
Josh, wow. It's great.
No, we're trying to get the kids outside. So...
Well, binoculars have looked through the windows.
Yeah, we're trying to get them outside so they can bring more mud into the building. That's part of the, and it's why Mrs. Stein from the high school is that she's gone home about getting the kids out to the pond and out back, setting up a backyard bird watch that's tied into the Cornell that they do annually, which this way we can get almost a pair of binoculars in every kid's hands and help them appreciate where they live and what all those little nuances are of our own backyard before we start talking about our effect on a local scale.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or objections? I don't know. Motion carried. The second is to accept a donation from Mike's Hall of Fame here in the amount of $100 to the athletic department to support Trueman'sburg Athletics and their activities. You don't wish.
So moved.
And second.
What's it do?
Thank you.
This is, I'll add one extra thank you. A lot of, there's a few donations that are being made by some of the local businesses to pay for students' admission to basketball games and other events. So that is thanks to the work of D.J. Williamson, alumni, who's got a son in the school, but always very supportive of our programs, and so he is drumming up support so that we can get more kids to attend games.
Okay. Nice way to do it.
Yep.
Okay. We did accept that, right? I'm not... Okay. I don't see is to approve an increase in our registered nurse position, one full-time.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Okay.
What's about?
This is a position we need to take, take care of student need.
Oh, for a particular...
I need to have them, yeah.
So we have a nurse in each school, and this is...
This will be an extra nurse.
A nurse for a particular student, okay.
Much focused, yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or any objections?
Closed.
Okay, and item B is authorization for the superintendent to sign a proposal with Richardson Brothers Electrical Contractors to install an 80-kilowatt natural gas generator.
So moved.
And second?
Second.
Okay. Any questions?
Yes.
Question?
Right here.
Oh, okay, I didn't see that.
Are you sure it's large enough for what we need?
Yep. The size will sufficiently back up the bus garage.
Okay, so it's more than just a server we're looking for?
Well, we evaluated the cost difference between a small generator and rewiring the network operations center so that the generator only backed up that, and just backing up the entire buildings so that we didn't have to do a lot of rewiring, and it was actually cheaper to buy a larger generator and back the whole building than rewiring because of the way that they wired the network operations center. They have it powered from a couple of different panel boxes, so to be able to dedicate its own panel and to rewire those circuits back to that panel, it just made more sense just to back up the building.
Will it fund the fuel pumps too?
Yes, the fuel pumps are fed from that building to the pole barn to the fuel pumps.
And this is a backup?
This is a backup generator.
Switch on.
It's not an emergency generator, it's a backup generator. Because emergency generates, emergency generator wording automatically generates different code requirements for the generator itself and how that, the life system, the life safety systems are wired and stuff within the building. So it is a backup generator that will back up the entire building.
And it will start on its own in the event of power?
Yep, it's a natural gas fed, so if we lose power, it'll still turn on, turn on lights on, so.
So this is, will maintain lights, will maintain heating?
Yep, the bus garage for the network operations center so that...
All our servers.
Yeah, that system doesn't go down in the event that we lose power.
So that's pretty much what they put on all, just a bigger version.
A bigger version.
Okay. Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or objections? Okay, motion carried. Which brings us to the board report. Would you like to...
This is our book. And as you will recall, we sort of went light in December with chapter three in the movie, but really, chapter four has the, I would say, all those gray boxes. Your leadership team member was asking me how to get through this quick, and I said, "Just look at all the gray boxes, that's the key," because those compare, contrast the 20th century skills, which a lot of people in this room probably went through education with the 20th century skills being emphasized in the classrooms versus 21st century skills, which many, many would say this is what we need to be doing for our students to prepare them for their best possible future. So if you want to look through some of those things or talk through them, that's great. There's a lot there.
Can I ask a question?
Dive in.
Can I ask a question about your original document?
Yeah.
It has to do with, there's, for those who haven't read the book, there's portions of interview, there's sections in between chapters of anecdotal stories of high school students and high school graduates, and one of them, right in between chapter three and four, was called Jamie, and it's about this student who came from a, I would say, a lower to middle-class family who ended up with a lot of student debt, and I think, John, this might be a question for you as far as if there is a lot of conversation, or what is the conversation at the high school level about long-term debt associated with college tuition?
I think it's right up there.
It's interesting, we have had some conversations about that lately. It's not a big part, it's not part of our mainstream program. I mean, we spent a lot of time trying to talk about getting kids into college, but it's actually really only more recently that we started having conversations with kids about some of the stuff that we learned about last year when we had Bill Daggett here, you know, that idea of what you major in is really important, and so pick your major wisely, because going out and spending $250,000, $300,000 on a college degree that you can't turn into a job when you graduate is really a poor decision. And so, and even that is culturally, that's a tough thing to do, because, you know, we've talked with kids about the fact that there's a lot of college degrees working in Starbucks right now. So we've had some of those conversations, but none of it's been formalized. That's where my counselors, the school counselors are working on program, you know, the classroom lessons that they teach. If you spend a little bit of time in Mr. Clifford's English class, you'll hear a lot of that kind of conversation about Anakin attached to 12th grade English, they've talked a lot, I think, this year about that, and making really good choices as they move forward, so.
It would be nice to see something formalized.
Can you, do you want to share, like, can you talk about Mr. Clifford and you guys have worked on?
We've definitely had a lot of conversations this year about choosing your major wisely, as you said, and just like the pros and cons, even like, Mr. Clifford has talked to us about, like, there are options of not going to college and not being in that much debt, but also having a good job and being, you know, or working really hard to get where you want to go in life, that kind of thing. So we've talked about a lot of the different options, a lot of the different routes you can take, like community college, and then transferring, that kind of thing, four-year college, all those different options, and so we've talked a lot about it, working right out of high school for a year or two, traveling abroad, so I know in his class, he's covered a lot of it, and he's been, I had him as a sophomore as well, and he even talked about it then. So it's been kind of all the way through high school, where he's thrown these ideas around, and I think it's been really helpful as a student just to hear all the different perspectives and kind of go over them rather than just like, college, 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 and like, hear it all, even though I am going to college, it was so nice to hear it all.
Yeah.
So, yeah, definitely had conversations like that.
Does he teach all the sections of senior English?
No, he's one of four sections of English 12, but the two teachers that teach English 12 Regents co-plan, so he and Jane George work together, and so they're reading some of the same books, some of the same articles, and so. The only student, the students who wouldn't be getting that are the students who are in AP English, the 12th grade AP English with Jane, because Jane teaches three of the four sections of 12th grade English, and Neil teaches one, but they're working collaboratively together, so.
I get what you're saying, I was looking for you, though, you want that exit spreadsheet for students to complete, going to college X, tuition each year will cost X, future career in X field will generate X income, student debt is...
That would be amazing.
I could take some interns over.
Yeah, there you go. It just would be nice to see the, that information be the burden at the high school level, so that, I mean, I remember, I felt tricked, I was 20 years old, and I realized how much debt I was gonna have, and I was like, I never even thought of this, so it's good to hear that it's a conversation at least, but it would be nice to get formalized in some way.
Well, it's also good to hear that they are addressing other sort of non-traditional approaches to getting the job that you want.
Right.
That if you're somewhat, you don't really know what you want to do.
The irony is, is that I've, how do we put this? Culturally, there are some folks that are very, they get angry when we have conversations with students about things other than going to college.
Yeah.
Because there is an expectation culturally that my kid will go to college, and so trying to help families understand and kids to understand that there are lots of options out there, and that's, I mean, once you read this book, that's one of the big messages that they're sending out.
And if you have a candid conversation with some of the college recruiters and some of the deans, I think you will discover that a lot of these young people that are going to college do not yet have the emotional maturity to be able to be successful their first year. It doesn't really have a lot to do with their academic abilities. It has to do with how mature they are, and by taking a gap year and working in someplace where you actually are interested, or you just want to get away from being in academics for a while, I think it gives you an opportunity to be able to have a better...
of the deans, I think you'll discover that a lot of these young people that are going to college do not yet have the emotional maturity to be able to be successful their first year. It doesn't really have a lot to do with their academic abilities. It has to do with how mature they are and by taking a gap year and working at someplace where you actually are interested or you just want to get away from being in academics for a while, I think it gives you an opportunity to be able to have a better chance to make a good choice for you.
Yeah.
Not necessarily for what has been expected of you. I mean, my generation was, well, of course, you know, here's the check, but there's a big difference between $1,500 a semester and $35,000 per semester.
Formal.
Yeah.
I love it.
And to answer the concern about those who would feel, who don't want you to talk to their student about other options besides college after high school, framing it as an investment if it is gonna be this, well, even for the parents, framing it as an investment is...
Well, and it's, there's, there's also even, as part of that conversation, it's also just talking to kids, as you started with, about what are you gonna major in? Because there's a lot of kids that wanna, that leave here really excited about what they've learned in certain classes, but not realizing or necessarily thinking through what kinds of career options are out there for an English major or a history major or a philosophy major or, you know, which by no means should you say that you can't major in those things or you should major in those, but when you look at the statistics about what kids are majoring in and that the top two majors in our country right now are business and psychology, you know, the world only needs so many psychologists. I am what I know. We, we don't need that many more. Um, we're not worried about how good we feel, but we need to make stuff in this country and if you look at our economy and look at where the jobs are, we need, we need kids that know how to make things, so.
In all aspects.
Yes.
Do our counselors have enough where we go, enough access to information?
Yes.
About being able to sort of see the wide varieties that are available for kids who say, "All right."
Yeah.
Not this year. And, you know, just to alleviate some of the angst of parents, you can usually always go to college. You don't have to do it right out of high school.
Right. The, the counselors, in, in answering your question, our counselors also have some tools. Guidance Direct is a software package that we have and are available to all of our students that has a breadth of information about colleges and careers and there are surveys in there and tools that the kids can use with their counselor to help them explore what's out there and learn more about career choices and whatnot.
Not necessarily only college, but other areas that they could investigate.
Right. So, and the, the key piece as we move forward, having our counselors, two full-time counselors now this year, one of the great advantages of that is having that ability to have more of those one-on-one conversations with students, having more of the classroom lessons that they're able to put together for kids so that, that encourages them to come and have the one-on-one session to, to explore some of those things. So, yes. I think a couple of other things that we're starting, like camp convention, just another awareness and fun learning thing for the summer, and then Josh and the little school are going to do the STEM Career Day, and that will certainly kind of open students' eyes to, yeah, all of these different careers, so that might be related to things that, um, might not require a four-year degree or, or might they, or it might just get them more intentional about what they're taking through high school or even their eighth-grade year. Well, you saw in Kimberly's presentation, one of the key pieces that we're looking at in budgeting for next year, and this goes to the board goal, is that person who will help kids with capstone projects, internship experiences, and looking more and more at those personal experiences that kids can have to learn more about careers that are out there and paths that they can take to get to those careers. So again, I'm, I'm excited about giving kids, you know, if you have that position and it's the right person, to have somebody who can meet with every single junior and plan for their senior year to say, "Okay, I want to do an internship and I want to do it in this field and here's how we're gonna go out finding that internship experience." So, um, or doing a capstone project where they work with a mentor in a particular field and/or, and are just learning more about it, so.
And we've talked about, or having beginning conversations about our, you know, our neediest students and starting those conversations even earlier, you know, in ninth and 10th grade, what could we do with their schedule to put some work in their day, you know, some job shadowing or those things to keep them interested in school and flexibility in their schedules, so, um, we are just kind of starting those conversations, probably, again, it's probably cycling around again, but you know, what can we do for those kids who are at risk?
Well, the other thing the book sort of suggests or remarks upon is the fact that some of this actually can start in elementary school. You can focus on a child's enthusiasm or what it is that they're really passionate about, and if we can identify that early and help support it, then I think that gives them an opportunity at an early age to start thinking.
And I like the idea of potential. I don't like the idea of, by 10th grade, they need to know what they're gonna do or, you know, cause sometimes it's not, you're a junior in college, you're like, oops, you know, that was their own major. And I think the exposure and giving kids all the experiences so they at least have some idea, but some of the freedom to, you know, make some different decisions and...
Philosophically, the conundrum here is, is that we always say, you know, kids don't, you know, don't make them grow up too soon, you know, you don't have to know what you're gonna major in when you get to college, you know, you, you still have time to find out what you want to do when you grow up in a sense, and that message that was so, so broad when I was in college, you know, you don't have to know your major, it's okay. The problem is, is that going to college has become so expensive now that if you're gonna invest in that, darn well better know what you're gonna do with it, because as you said, I mean, you guys have said it, you don't want to graduate with $200,000 in debt and think, "Oh, maybe I want to do something else." Cause that happens, it happens all the time.
It's probably developmentally appropriate for some, you know, it just financially is too bad.
But I think if children in, in the elementary school can be allowed to have a passion and to be encouraged in that passion, because not to be somewhat of a heretic, but there are some of us who actually reinvent ourselves throughout our career and that what we choose to do is not a terminal sentence. You can discover something else that perhaps you can take something, as an English major, I discovered that there are many avenues open to those of us who appreciate and love the King's English.
And I think knowing too that you can have something that you love to do and has a passion that will be a really great lifelong hobby, you know, but maybe you need to pick something different that's going to pay the bills, you know, it might need to be a Beyoncé.
Yeah, but at the same time, that hobby can also frequently become something...
But I sure love it.
I'm just looking at Anna, cause all the gears are grinding over there in Anna's side, but she's right there at this point, I think, that's a tough decision, so.
I think what I liked about the book is it basically said that technically speaking, yes, you need to choose a career, but make sure that career lets you live your life. Because I know a number of people that are locked into a career that you don't necessarily want, but they're good at it. Okay, any other comments?
I'd just, I'd like to circle all the way back into chapter four and just invite everyone, just take a look at the 21st century skills and if you'd like some time, let's just walk the halls of Truanceburg and with any one of those and see, is it happening? Is that something we value? Many things are already happening, it just, I think this helps us take inventory, are we really helping our students when they decide that passion or they pick that career path? Are we giving them all the skills that will help them succeed, whether, whether it involves college or two-year college or whatever path it is, are we giving them those skills to succeed regardless? And I think that's an important message for chapter four.
Do you think that it's worth looking, using this book as a filter, looking at the district goals and seeing if there's ways to reinvent them and, we talked about this a little bit in our, you know, finding a way to quantify those parameters and, and address as a district how we're meeting those goals through, through the length of book?
I think it's something to take on this spring, just as we move forward.
You know, I, I just want to add that over the past 10 or so years when my kids went through and my kids' friends and all the people that I know that are graduating out there, I think the proof is that we've been very successful in giving kids at least what they need to move out into the world. Many kids now, I don't know, but you can look at some of the amazing people that have gone through our school district.
Yes.
Really, you know, rocket scientists, I, you know, my, my son's friends are rocket scientists for GE down in Houston, you know, I mean, those kids that are doing amazing things.
We joke about that all the time.
He's a real rocket scientist, I'm sorry. Aeronautical engineer, PhD rocket scientist, out of T-Berg, you know? And there's a lot of stories like that and I just want to, you know, and there's a lot more stories too, and I, I know, you know, 2% of them, but, uh, the school has not inhibited, I don't believe, if you wanted to take a skill and go out into the world, you can do it out of this school. I believe.
I think our size, yeah, and probably arts help with that.
Yeah, arts, amazing.
A lot of creativity here.
Music. This guy, one of the kids is out in Hollywood writing, you know, screenplays.
Yes.
We think some of that is the individual attention that students get, that it's not, so, we're not so big that, you know, we lose track of people. You guys do an amazing job in high school, keeping track of every kid.
The middle where it gets rough.
They always do, you know.
Neil was gonna end up in the middle school.
Okay, and one last thing we wanted to address was, um, at our last board meeting, we approved a trip. Was it to Costa Rica? Okay, um, and there were some questions regarding the current state's safety for travel, so...
And I think there's something about not enough chaperone, somebody backed out?
Well, we, we, they found somebody. We have, we have another staff member that's going to go.
If, if I may, at this point, are you comfortable with all the arrangements that have been made and do you think it needs some...
I am, yes.
Okay. Very brief discussion with not the entire board, but the fact that we do reserve the right to cancel the approvals, given circumstances.
World events.
Yeah.
Yeah, I was gonna say, world events certainly, I think, and I think that, I'm not sure if she's gotten travel insurance for that trip. I know sometimes they do make that...
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, because otherwise the initial investments would be lifted.
Yeah.
Right, and Tina came up with a, what is it, the State, the State Department?
State Department.
That has a, a website that you can check.
TripAdvisor, yes.
Right, and thought that probably would be a good idea to sort of be abreast of this, be on top of it and be aware and not just take it for granted that, okay, we're gonna be fine.
Sure.
Okay, paranoia walked in that door. Any comments?
Yes, I do, yes, I may. Our, this name, the something, the topless county or somebody woman has, uh...
About that?
Yeah, which I have an excellent relationship, go figure. Uh, she has made available to Truanceburg schools a grant for $200,000 to be used toward a capital project and the facilities committee, we have to do a little paperwork to receive it. The facilities committee at this point is our, as most administrators know, discussing ways to best utilize that money. But I have great admiration for Ms. Lipton and I try to have lunch with her a couple of times a year and, uh, outside being a, a great person, I certainly respect and appreciate that. This is a third grant that she's given us in recent years. I, I, and I think all of us owe her a certain amount of gratitude and I will make sure I have lunch to ensure that.
Very good. I think it's, and you said, I'd like to just put an exclamation point on it, that it's for capital. It's really actually a, a DASNY form authority, it's from New York, kind of a bonding fund source, so it really is about cap, things that can be purchased for capital.
So I guess I don't go to Disneyland again this year.
Well, you can't use it for staffing, those kinds of things, it has to be something that you can see, touch.
You can use the programming.
You can, it has to be something you can see, touch.
Security's long been an issue and that's where I will update this from.
Well, Joe kindly gave us a whole fairly comprehensive list of what we could actually use.
Yeah, I was just, we're on darts at some pretty high priority things, items that, that we can focus it on and, I mean, it's not, doesn't include everything, but I thought that those were...
No, it's a good place to start.
Yeah.
But this allows you to deviate from our building condition survey, something that might not exactly be a, is it number four, water, number five, whatever, the higher part is a priority, allows you to deviate to some and be able to reach down a little bit to fill a, a deal. I'll call it that.
Okay, anything else?
Then I did a motion to adjourn to executive session?
So moved.
Yeah, yeah, this is regarding the medical, financial or important matters of a particular person, person's school or corporation.
Are we gonna, are we gonna stay waiting here?
No, I think we should, we can run the talks.
While you're moving, can I ask a question? Just a, there was some discussion last year about BOC's providing us a mentor for the technical aspects of theater and the four R's, these are various schools. Is that ongoing?
Yeah, yeah, they, they did some work and it wasn't gonna happen and then it's sort of a still-in-line question.
I just wanted to say, the number of jobs that are generating technical aspects of filmmaking, radio, television, digital are immense in terms of jobs.
Yeah. Well...